Let's call the Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting to order being 5:59 PM. And let the record reflect that we have a full quorum person, Mr. Haso, Ms. Vialpando, Mr. Escobar, and Ms. Doris Salinas Sanchez, and myself, Enrique Montalvo. Uh, see this is communications, ma'am?
There was none submitted, Mr. Montalvo.
Thank you. Uh, minutes, the approval of the minutes of April the first, 2021 meeting. Any corrections, additions, comments in reference to the meetings of April the first from any of the members? Here none, then, motion to approve. Do I hear motion to approve?
I make the motion.
The minutes. Motion by Ms. Vialpando, do I hear a second?
I said.
Who was that? The second motion?
How much was the score on?
Oh, Mr. Escobar, okay. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, everyone signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So, suppose same sign, motion carried. Uh, item number two, public hearing on the request submitted by Juan Carlos and Maribel Salazar for the rezoning of Lot 8, Lot 29 of U. 1st Edition, also known as 663 Colorado Street from R1, First One Family Puente District to R3 Duplex District in closing of the public hearing. Mr. Madera?
Yes, sir, thank you, I'll be presenting this item and Ms. Maribel will be presenting the next item. So, this, this, um, item review is a rezon request from R1 to R3, as you just mentioned, off of Colorado Street. The applicants are Juan Carlos and Maribel Salazar, uh, Ferry Street. This is a 7500-foot lot, the typical size in this area, 50 feet wide by 150 feet deep. Um, it is an existing developed neighborhood, which does have all the, all the services and infrastructure in place. And this may sound somewhat familiar, we had a similar application by these owners off of Comal Street, 688 Comal, on, uh, the previous meeting, or it might have been two meetings prior, where they were applying for something similar. Uh, in that case, that was a vacant lot, but a similar request to change R1 to R3. Um, in that, in that meeting and here as well, we will mention the FEMA flood map, which is a critical item that we'll be looking at for, for many, if not all, of rezoning requests or any type of development that will possibly increase impervious coverage in an area. In this case, the area is not in or necessarily in the immediate area of the FEMA floodway, but is upstream of that. This is the property at the top of the screen. This is what the, uh, existing structure looks like. And they are seeking to do, um, a duplex, multi, multi-unit, similar to uh, what was presented in the previous one, two one-bedroom efficiency-type units, uh, under one roof. So, we would refer to that as a, as a duplex unit, which would fall under the R3, which is what they're applying for the rezon to. You can see below a couple of images we wanted to show you. Uh, basically just across the street is another apartment, two-story, where you could see that middle photo with the, and two other units parked in front. And then the bottom photograph is just beside that at the corner, uh, also about three or four, um, properties away from this applicant's location, where there is a Eagle Pass Housing Authority housing, um, unit in that area. Here's an area of what I was just describing, so the, uh, highlighted in red or boxed in red is the applicant's property location, just across the apartment that we described. And then you can see adjacent to that, the Housing Authority, uh, properties, which are at the intersection of Ferry and Colorado. So, as we've been doing this year, the strict application of the ordinance would, uh, lead us to a recommendation of denial, so we're, we're presenting that as the base case, and we're going to present a little bit more information as well for the, uh, commission's recommendation. So, again, base, uh, base recommendation off a very strict application of the rule would be to keep it as an R1 in order to maintain the, the character of the property of this zoning area. However, being that we pointed out right across the street and very directly in the area, there's other multifamily. So, the, the intent of the code in, in preserving the R1, uh, wouldn't really apply here, because we wouldn't be preserving the characteristics of an R1, because it's already been changed with several properties right in the area, right on that street. So, um, having said that, another consideration for the, for the commission's, uh, commission to consider would be an approval here, being that there's other multifamily in the immediate vicinity right across the street. It could add additional affordable housing to the community. And, um, if the commission is considering, would consider approval of this request, the planning department would recommend a condition of allowing for a maximum of 50% impervious cover, which is the same as a, as an R1 house would, would have the ability to do, meaning this house or a duplex would not cover any more area than a regular single-family house. Um, here's a quick sketch of what the applicants plan to construct, which is, again, as I mentioned before, two single-unit, single-bedroom efficiency, um, under one roof, under, as one duplex. So, again, um, here's a strong case here for the approval, and that would be the, uh, commission's prerogative. But the strict application we did list was the, uh, denial recommendation. One other thing I'll quickly mention is that the city, the planning department is doing some research on an overlay district, we've seen other cities do something where it could be an R1 dis- district, uh, originally, but in order to help incentivize and promote growth, they are, the city, other cities have allowed certain overlay areas where either duplexes could be done, or, uh, sometimes they're called granny flats or small efficiency units in the rear. Maybe you have a mother-in-law, you want to come and bring, uh, have closer to you and be able to construct a small structure in your backyard where in an R1, that would not be allowed. But, um, it does help to promote property value increase, uh, does promote, um, affordable housing, more affordable options. And so, this is something we are researching that could impact properties like this in the near future. Uh, any questions with this presentation?
Any questions from the members of the commission? From Mr. Madera, before I open it up for the public?
No. Mr. Madera, I, I just have a comment just on, on, on that, I, you know, if you, if you've been around downtown, you know, it's, uh, it's like, uh, it's, uh, um, an old neighborhood or the old Eagle Pass, and, and I'm pretty sure that, uh, that, uh, that it was under a certain zoning or residential zoning, but as more people, I, I guess, are moving now of the downtown area, we do see a lot of empty lots, uh, uh, on, on a lot of streets. And we would love, I mean, to attract, you know, either people, uh, people, of course, families, but, uh, but if, if, if that's not the case, then we need to get, uh, some of those, uh, uh, lots, because there are a lot of empty lots all over the place. And we need to, uh, I, I guess, uh, build, you know, affordable housing, ma'am, for, 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 for people who, I mean, all the services are already there, you know, they don't have to go, I mean, all out to the suburbs and, and so forth, and, uh, it's close to a lot of things that we can, uh, uh, you know, promote the growth of downtown. So, so, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm kinda, uh, glad to hear that you guys are looking at some of those things, you know, because, uh, yes, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure that most of the codes downtown are for, for, for single-family dwellings. But I, I think that what we need, uh, or what, uh, what we need, first of all, is people to, uh, invest or build, uh, build more, more housing and build it, and build it close to the downtown area. So, I mean, I really, I, I'm really glad to your, or glad that your department is, it, it, it's being proactive in doing that.
That's a great point, that's pretty much one of the, that's, you hit the nail right on the head. That's one of the main goals for those programs, and, and that's what we would be looking to do. Uh, we will be getting some research and presenting that information to, to council to look at in the near future. Thank you.
Any other comments?
My only concern, my only concern about this one is for the parking, being that it's going to be a duplex, for the parking, is there enough space for the vehicles and for the safety or ambulance or fire? I mean, you never know if you need any, uh, emergency units that need to go and address any situation.
Yes, that's another good question, so the parking, even if the rezon is, uh, is approved today, when they seek to construct and they submit a permit application, it would have to have the required number of parking spaces on, on the property itself. So, they would not be able to move forward with something that did not have the adequate parking. And, um, in the street itself, Colorado Street does have, um, the adequate right-of-way space, plenty of right-of-way space for emergency vehicle access from both through the ferry side or the, the other, I mean, I believe it might be Second Street where it intersects, but the other, the other cross-street as well.
Thank you.
Will there be enough parking spaces for those vehicles, Mr. in that small particular lot size? Or they're going to be off-street parking?
The plans would require, they would need to have the minimum required parking spaces, uh, in their plan set in order for us to even consider reviewing their, their permit application. So, it will have the, it does have the space, they will have to plan the adequate parking in the lot. And this is actually very similar, they use the same, the, uh, same or very similar plan that they are going to be using on Comal. So, they already have a plan that, uh, does meet the requirements in place, and they plan to use that again.
Any other comments from the commission before I open up for the public hearing in the audience?
You're on mute, Ms. Doris.
I'm sorry, you had a question?
I'm not, I thought Ms. Salinas Sanchez had a question, but, um, she's on mute.
Oh, okay, uh, at this time, I'll open up for the public, uh, questions or comments from the public in reference to the, uh, public hearing that's submitted by Juan Carlos and Maribel Salazar for rezoning of Lot 8, Lot 8, Lot 29 of U. 1st Edition. Any comments or questions from the audience that may do so at this time?
Mr. Montalvo, I see Ms. Doris raising your hand, but we can't, we can't hear. Can you try to unmute, ma'am? We can't, we can't hear you.
I've sent her a text, hopefully she's able to respond.
Okay.
Oh, she's, she says, yeah, she cannot unmute it, so it's too hold on, because she does have that question.
Okay.
She's going to try to see if she can unmute herself.
All right.
And just for the record, Placido, um, if I may address the, the commission, uh, I believe it was 19 notices that we mailed out. It should be on the recommendation section, I can't remember what slide it was.
Yes, I'm glad you caught that, I fell to, to make that one.
Yeah, there. Yes, so it's 19 notices that were mailed out and none were returned in favor or in opposition. Just for the record.
Thank you for catching that, ma'am.
Yes, you're welcome.
Is she on muted or still?
She's still on, she's still muted.
Okay. Apparently, we don't have anyone in the audience wishing to address this issue, right? From what I'm hearing?
That is correct, Mr. Montalvo.
Okay, uh, well, I'll, I'll repeat it again in case, uh, you know, somebody pops in. Anybody, anyone in the audience that wishes to address this issue may do so at this time in reference to this request from Juan Carlos and Maribel Salazar, uh, Lot 8, Lot 29 of U. 1st Edition, from R1 to R3 Duplex District. And here none, I'll close the, that portion and wait for Ms. Doris Salinas, in case she has a, uh, comment. And I'll wait for a few minutes.
Ms. Doris, maybe you could call in, um, from a different phone through the, the 312, let me see, the number is And you might be able to get the audio through your phone and still continue seeing us through the go-to meeting.
So, so Ms. Doris says that she has several, uh, comments, uh, but she would like to approve the, the, the request. I'm not sure if.
Okay.
The access code is 908-123605, in case you're trying to call in, Ms. Doris.
Okay, well, we're waiting, I, uh, I have a comment to make or a question or some direction in reference to the, my concern. Uh, according to the documents submitted for this particular, uh, public hearing request, uh, the Planning and Zoning Department is recommending denial to the City of Eagle Pass, uh, City Council on the request of zoning R1 to R3, known as 663 Colorado Street. So, what you're doing now, you're changing, uh, your, your recommendation, Mr. Madera?
Yes, I apologize, that's, uh, confusing, but the way I, I have been trying to present for the, for most of, uh, this year, at least 2021, is, is just sticking straight to the code, black and white. But a lot of times, there's other things to consider, and that's where the commission has the, the prerogative to be able to, to make those adjustments and decide whether strict application of the rules is really appropriate or not. So, in this case, you know, I, I see the very strong argument to approve, but we have been, um, consistent with just presenting the recommendation based off of the, based off of the code. Hope that makes sense.
Ms. Salinas on the line?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
If you might need a mute.
I'm sorry, it's a lot of echo. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, uh, I have a question, uh, Mr. Madera, I was looking at, um, the agenda and on the appraisal district, they do have these considered as a land residential multifamily as of now, is that correct? That's the way it shows on the Maverick Appraisal District Property ID 10136 for Mr. and Mrs. Salazar, which is land, it's, uh, it's already categorized as residential multifamily.
Yes.
That includes, that already includes a duplex. Anything that's more than one multifamily residential, um, dwelling is duplex, triplex, or fourplex. Now, I was kind of confused, because you said you, you indicated on the same street, we do have across the street some housing duplexes and apartments, right?
Correct.
And your recommendation is to approve their request to move forward and have it as a duplex and not to, uh, move forward? I missed that part.
That's the question I just asked. That's the question I asked, Ms. Salinas, in reference to the recommendation that they're submitting on document is denial. And now he's, he's making another statement, so which is the legal recommendation that you're making?
My recommendation is to allow them to move forward with a duplex, because I don't see why they would be denied if we are allowing the neighbors to have duplexes in the, on the same street. As long as they comply with the space, uh, necessary for the, for the parking space, and as long as they follow the safety, um, regulations and recommendations from the city, I don't see why we would not allow the Salazar family to have a duplex on this particular property.
Don't misunderstand me, I'm not against changing anything. The question that I have is the legal document that he submitted for approval or to this, on the agenda for approval is to deny this particular request, but now making another statement, you know, bringing out other issues to this particular one. So, which is the legal interpretation that we're going to go and file? Does he need to come back and correct that change that he's making now?
No.
Or what's the procedure?
Yes, sir.
Director, that is all.
Yes, Mr. Montalvo, so, a couple things. One, let me address Ms. Doris, she made a good observation. If you go to the appraisal district, it does show R3. And there are, unfortunately, oftentimes, the appraisal district zoning is not necessarily matching what is on our zoning map, which is what I just brought up on the screen, I'm not sure if you can see it before you now, but all that yellowish, um, kind of vanilla coloring that corresponds with R1 zoning. So, this is our official city zoning map. So, although the appraisal district says R3, our zone, it doesn't match with our actual zoning map. So, that's why, and if you see nearby these more brown, uh, kind of, yeah, the brownish color corresponds to R3, so all around in the general area, there's a lot of R3 zoning. But this particular, and even, even on the other sections of Colorado Street, a lot of Colorado Street is brown-zoned R3, but this particular area is not per our zoning map. So, that's, that's why, um, they are needing to go through the process to go from our, apply for R1 to R3 change.
Just keep in mind also that, um, the appraisal district, um, appraises a property based off of what's on the ground. They, they are not necessarily based upon our zoning maps, our city maps. It's always good to just verify the zoning before you, uh, you know. The, the right way to go about is to verify the zoning with the City of Eagle Pass Planning Department.
This presentation that you just made, Mr. Madera, was it, you found out this information after you submitted this document for, on the agenda for denial?
No, sir.
I'm trying to get the legal, legal aspect of this, because if you have made that, if, if what you just made a statement on, you should have put it on the, on the recommendation section. Instead of giving us a denial.
I understand your, your perspective and the, my, my prerogative or my, my belief on this is that, as a planning department, my job and our job is to just adhere to the ordinances and the rules, what's in black and white. And based off of that, uh, the recommendation would be to deny. However, I think there's.
But that's your recommendation, right?
That's correct.
That is your, the official recommendation that you're making today?
Correct.
To deny.
Correct.
To deny.
However, I, I, you know, wanted to make, uh, the points that there's, there's research being done, and there's, there's, um, reason why the strict application may not be the best application here. And that's the commission's job, and that's what, you know, you're, you're, um.
But your role then is to make what's legal, and this is what is legal, right? What you sent up, okay. So, what you just stated, it just is additional information that you're providing. Is, is that, is that correct, what I'm understanding, or, or I'm wrong?
You are correct, in case you want to consider an alternative to the strict application of the code.
So, this is, your, your recommendation is illegal, is legal recommendation, based on what is written right now on our document to deny.
That's correct.
That is illegal, right? That's illegal thing, the right thing to do.
That would be the right thing if we, if we follow it per the letter of the law.
Okay.
May I, may I, this is, this is Orlando Haso, may I make a comment? May I interject?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Madera, isn't it true, though, that the commission, by the bylaws of the commission and the city ordinance and the city council's authority to the commission, we can overrule your recommendation, and we feel it's in the best interest of the community to overrule your recommendation, correct?
Yes, sir. That's a perfect way to put it.
And I'm thinking, just, uh, what you're, what you're telling me as a member of the commission is, listen, I have no choice but to deny based on what's written in black and white. However, uh, your discretion is to approve subject to, uh, these applicants complying with all of the city ordinance that are required to comply with in order to build the duplex, correct?
Exactly correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Madera, could you share with everybody, I don't know if they have in front, uh, in their package, the piece of paper that's, um, an attachment to their planning department application where it shows the, the cat, the county appraisal district sheet where it shows that the land is residential multifamily, and then just the, the photo that you shared with us, where there's three duplexes and apartments right across the street from this one, okay? So, if you can just, um, show them what I was, um, trying to explain here. I know there's a lot of discrepancies, unfortunately, with the Maverick County Appraisal District and what you're telling us, but if you go down the line where it says improvement, you see residential, and then you go all the way to where it says land on the very bottom. And originally, the description for this piece of land of 0.17 acre, of an acre, 7,500 square feet, was RM, which is for residential multifamily use. seven thousand five hundred square feet, was RM, which is for residential multifamily use. Anything that can be duplex, triplex, or fourplex. So that's my point. If across the street, we have duplexes and apartments, why wouldn't be uh, a correct decision for, for the city to allow this family to also use it for the same purpose of multifamily duplex?
I agree. That's a good point.
I mean, I don't think it would be fair if you have apartments right across the street. It's the same street, as long as they're in compliance with what you're gonna require comes with the safety and the spaces for the parking space and everything. But this land was originally designed to be used as a residential multifamily.
Yes, that's a good point.
So that was just my point.
That's a very good point.
Any other comments or questions in reference to the public hearings on the request by Juan Carlos and Maribel Salazar for rezoning of Lot Eight, Block Twenty-Nine of Hill Crest Edition, known as six-six-three Colorado Street from R1, family dwelling district to R3 duplex district? Any further comments or questions from the members of the commission? I believe already closed the public hearing, right, Maribel? I'm, is there a?
Yes, Mr. Montalvo, you did uh, close the public hearing for this.
The chair then understands what are your wishes in reference to this particular uh, item?
I move to approve.
There's a motion to approve by Mr. Scovar. Do I hear a second?
My second.
I move to approve the application, Doris Salinas Sanchez.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So support, same sign, motion carries.
Okay, just for the record, Mr. Montalvo, I'm sorry. Just for the record, we got a motion by Mr. Scovar and a second by Ms. Vialpando, okay? Just wanted to make that note.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, uh, public hearing on the proposed replat of Lot Two in Block Eight of Chula Vista Heights subdivision, Unit Three.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, I'll be presenting. So what you have before you is a replat submitted by Tech Services Engineering Firm. Here, the property owner, Mr. Mata, um, is uh, or is requested to subdivide a vacant lot into two uh, residential lots, each being eleven thousand five hundred eighty-seven square feet, including a variance to proceed to final, directly without first having obtained preliminary replat approval and a sidewalk waiver including curb and gutter. So this lot is, is off of uh, Hilltop Drive, located in Chula Vista Heights subdivision, Unit Three. All, the lot is, is serviced. It's gone through uh, also through the Maverick County Planning Department, who have also waived that sidewalk waiver and the curb and gutter as well. Uh, let's see what we have here.
Were notices sent out, ma'am?
Yes, we sent out forty notices and received, I believe it was, uh, there we go. Forty notices and uh, none were returned in favor or in opposition and four were returned as undeliverable.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Just FYI, this will go before our city council uh, on their scheduled June first meeting. And after that, it'll go to our county commissioners' court. Anything that I'm missing, Mr. Madera?
Nope, I think you covered it. We have a couple of images on the, on the screen as well, which are the recorded plat, the original recorded plat. And then the blue lines showing the proposed subdivision of the lots, which they're still be uh, fairly sizable compared to city lots. Those, these, after being split, will still be larger than many city lots.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the members of the commission? Comments? Here now, the now opening for the public uh, audience. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address uh, this item in reference to replat of Lot Two in Block Eight of Chula Vista Heights subdivision, Unit Three, is proposed. Anyone, the audience may do so at this time. Hearing now, I will close the public hearing portion, bring it back before the commission. And what are your wishes?
Okay, we're gonna close that public hearing at six thirty-two PM, Mr. Montalvo, okay?
Thank you. Chair, the motion for approval?
I, I move, Mr. Montalvo, I move to approve.
Scovar motions to approve. Do I hear a second?
I second that, Doris Salinas Sanchez.
Ms. Doris, second. Any further comments or questions, concerns? Here now, do everyone signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, same time.
Aye.
None. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and uh, we apologize for the changing of the hour and the time on the, on behalf of the planning department. Uh, sometimes those things are unexpected and uncontrollable, but we try to get a, a better coordination uh, for the times of concern for our next meeting. We apologize to all of you. We caused you any inconvenience.
Sir, we. Sir, we got all the members in.
Yeah, right. A motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Ms. Vialpando, motions to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hasso. Any further comments? Here now, do one signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I, I, so support, same time, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you.
Stay healthy.
Thank you.
Thank you.